I'm going to call this town council work session for March 25th to order. We're going to start with planning commission decisions. Please only say if you want to call up one of the two final things that were in there. It was Beaver Run Conference tents. And then we're going to talk about the driving range and that's going to be a public meeting tonight. So only need input on the tents, which we've done before. Okay, moving on. The ordinance approving Little Daisy residential lease renewal, second reading. Welcome Duke.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You have in your packet an ordinance approving the residential lease renewal and extension of the Little Daisy load lease to a five-year term. And this was, we discussed this February 25th work session. And then first reading was March 11th. And this is the second reading. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Any questions for Duke? Ready for tonight? Perfect, we'll move forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Keely, the plastics ordinance, senior just plastic.
So you do have in your packet an amended plastic reduction and bag fee ordinance. The modifications to this ordinance, it's amended and restated. Essentially, it's been reorganized in order to, yeah, Jesse can come down and answer any other questions in case the council has any. But it's really a housekeeping item to clarify and make it usable for staff to enforce the ordinance. So those are, those are the changes. It's been reorganized so that it makes sense. And then it ties back to the town code standard enforcement procedures in Title One, Chapter Four.
And just for clarification, for everybody in the audience, would you say that it's accurate to say that now the ordinance does what we thought we were always doing?
Yeah, exactly right. No, there's no, there's no real substantive changes. It's just sort of tying up, like I said, it's housekeeping and sort of tying up the pieces and making it work within the existing code so that it functions as intended.
She's worked with Jeffrey maybe, housekeeping. Any questions for Jesse or Keely? That's great. Thank you both.
Yeah.
See? All right, resolution authorizing the town of Breck finance director as a signatory on the existing state of Colorado loan. James.
Hello everyone, I'm Mayor and Town Council. Yeah, the resolution before you this evening is just as kind of read into the record there that it's just a housekeeping matter to authorize the finance director to be signatory. There was a memo in the packet that hopefully explained everything, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for James? Nope, all right, thank you very much. We're already into public projects.
Okay.
It's crazy. Maybe I'm on the wrong thing.
This is what I'm going, same mustache. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And we would like to start with the public projects update memo.
Yes, please.
Are you excited? Do you have lots of questions?
Questions, I mostly just had a question about why the agenda looks different every single time I open this program, but I'm back on.
Wish I could help there, I am also new at navigating this. So nothing major to add to this memo. We updated on Broken Lance, we're doing some great outreach planned, some in-person events as well as Breck Roads is up and running. And we have a dedicated website for the Broken Lance project. Communication team has been in close contact, had a great meeting with Brooke and Flor last week. And we feel like we are going to hit everywhere we can to get that information out because it is going to be an impactful project for Warriors Mark. Ballfield's out for bid, we'll bring back budget once we have a good handle on that. And asphalt and concrete is still going as planned for now. So I can take questions on that or any other construction that you're hearing about that could be happening?
Okay, just the public projects part, any questions?
Chin, on the Broken Lance culvert, were you just, are we in budget or on budget for that? Or for, so we're not having appropriate extra money to that between the rollover and what is already built in the CIP? And have we gotten hard numbers and selected a contractor for that already?
Yes, we are under contract and we have some contingency in there. We feel we have adequate budget. If we were to come into some really unforeseen circumstances, that could it make the budget increase and need an appropriation of it? At this time, we think we're covered with the current budget.
Anything else? I ran on the McCain Road today, it's lovely.
First time being there?
I, I've driven it, but that was my first time being out of my car.
And Chin, I was visited by a member of Snow Bridge today talking about lining the sewer line on Main Street. Is there anything, I know that's a Upper Blue sanitation project, but is there any light that you can shed on that?
Yeah, definitely. So Snow Bridge is the contractor for Upper Blue Sanitation District that has one of their main sewer lines down Main Street. The Sand District needs to line that sewer line. And they're going to do a cured-in-place liner. And they have asked and we have tentatively approved night work for this project, beginning the last week of April and going into May. Which on behalf of Sand District is coordinating directly with all the businesses that'll be impacted. And we're looking at doing work 7:00 PM, let me pull up that email. M to 7:00 AM. And we think that's going to be best for the community and the businesses to get that during non-peak hours. Of course, if there's restaurants open at 9:00 PM, Snow Bridge will accommodate their needs. And this is a really long piece of sewer, it's going all the way from Park to French, so all of Main Street. It's really important and we want to support the Sand District on getting this done in the least impactful way possible. We have to allow the work and we have agreed to their request to do it at night.
Is this open trench?
It's a cured-in-place liner, sorry, I didn't get into depth on that. It's all underground and what they do is shoot a liner through the existing pipe. And then it's cured and hardened, and then they cut in all the service lines. So this is instead of digging it all up, they go manhole to manhole to manhole. And this is to correct any leakage in or out of the pipe that is currently occurring.
That's great.
I think it's great they're using a local contractor.
For sure.
And we are, we are going to support on our social and any other, we're going to update on Breck Roads on this project. Of course, leading that it's a Upper Blue sanitation project, but we're going to support them with additional outreach, but they are taking that approach on the door-to-door.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Think we're ready for Schoonover?
Okay, we have a separate agenda item on Schoonover as well as needing some council direction on that. My mind's not loading, yours loading?
Yeah, I downloaded it.
Do you want me to just ask the questions or are you going to give a little?
Wasn't going to give a little spiel, must you would like one, we don't have anything additional. It was a great project, we learned a lot about diversion. And now we're ready to move forward with the next steps, unless you want to discuss the past project and how we want that Living Lab Bike Plaza to look like.
Do you want me to say the questions or, okay. So they need some direction on if we, if they agree, if we agree on not moving forward to install plumbing water into this place because it's just a pilot and we would end up, or we could, that could end up being a waste of money. So they would mobilize the quench buggy if there was a special event where we definitely wanted water there. But that's an additional 150 to $250,000. So staff is suggesting that we just go ahead and not install a water filling station right now. And then in addition, the portable toilets for that site that we had discussed having there. They're suggesting that we just go ahead and direct the members of the public, both here to Town Hall, which has an ADA accessible toilet, and then also at the parking garage, which has ADA and regular as well. So they need those two questions answered by us.
Quench buggy, great idea, no point in spending that additional money, we don't know how long we'll have it there. No porta-potties, if there's a way, doesn't the BTO have some sort of bathroom map?
Yes.
Resource, so just amplify that as a resource too.
All right, does anyone feel differently than that?
No.
Any questions, Todd, did you have something?
If there's value in putting porta-potties up, maybe you could kind of clad the exterior to make them look nicer than just regular green porta-potties. But is there value in learning if people would, are going to use bathroom facilities there or down the road if, you know, whatever gets put in there permanently? That would be the only thought there is like, we learned something about putting a porta-potty or two there. Not married to either outcome on that.
There's some difficulty with the porta-potties, right?
We, I mean porta-potties are not the most attractive for our downtown area. We were going to screen them with a fencing, I don't think we can add the actual unit, but we would maybe fence around them. But we still have to make sure they can come in and service them and switch them out, whether it's a cleaning or swap out, however they want to manage that. That's the way the contracts usually run, so it would have to be pretty open in at least one side. So we could do our best, but it would be porta-potties with a nice fence.
I, maybe you just would flip your idea, Todd, in that, you know, if we put portos there, we may find people do use them. And we have pretty close actual physical restrooms already in place. And so, you know, maybe we can work to, to make the behavior be that they utilize the bathrooms that currently exist. We have really nice bathrooms at the Gondola Garage.
Like that?
I think our wayfinding for restrooms would be Riverwalk Center, Town Hall and the garage. We could have all of those be pretty close. Because we are underway in another project that I haven't updated in a while because we haven't gotten much to give you feedback yet. But we're working on the wayfinding for the rec path through town with some of that more simple signage, simple in architecture and materials. And we're putting a lot of locations there as well as using restroom symbology for people for those locations. So we could also incorporate that at the Living Lab Plaza.
Maybe that's a smarter way to go, better signage and not extra infrastructure. Thanks for letting me wrestle with that a little bit.
Just a couple of comments really quick on the buggy, from my understanding of the, of the memo that they would just be put there on special events. Is there any reason why we wouldn't want it to kind of live there? Why?
We don't have water there.
And they're not designed for consistent and constant use. You know, we would be plumbing it likely to a hydrant. We experience some leakage no matter how you're, how you're filling those. And then when that water discharges, it's not going to a plumbed sewer system, it's just spilling out into the surface. So there is concerns about keeping those quench buggies in one location for extended periods of time. It's not really how they're designed.
Would it be, would it, is it designed well enough for weekends, like throughout the summer? Or even that's stretching it?
I mean, we could look at that, it, it takes a lot of staff resources to stand that up as well. So the number of times that we deploy it, we can study that, hearing that more frequent would be nice. But maybe we can come up with some schedule of weekends where we do implement it.
And then, oops. The, the parking that happens on the east side of the Schoonover lot, where it's, it's now marked as a delivery zone, I think it's permanent, it's treated as permanent parking. Like can we do ballards or, or I guess it's.
So I recently became clued in to what was going on over there.
Okay.
Our robust delivery do not parking signage was on the building. We did not stand that up adequately after we removed the building. And therefore the adjacent shop that likes to park there got right back in there and started parking again. We will retrain them, we will get that signage stood back up and it will continue to function as a delivery zone in the spring.
Thank you Shannon, that's amazing.
I wonder if the water, like the refill stations is a little bit of a similar thing with the restrooms, which is it'd be great if this summer we could have like a renewed just attempt at getting the information out about where the restrooms and where the water fill stations are. And I just pulled up the Be Like Breck app and I really don't know if I clicked through, maybe in dining and shopping, there's something. But it seems like if we could work with them to get a restroom and water refill station as one of their main landing things, that would be really useful.
I, I agree, and I have not played with the app enough to really see. I struggled with whether we should put like a water on our rec path signage. But I almost feel like it's intuitive that people would think there would be water at a restroom, right? It's usually kind of code required.
And I can't even picture like in.
What we would do.
Symbol would be.
Like a water drop.
Yeah, I guess.
I went back and forth and I figured restroom would be good to get on these, you know, less than.
People think if it's, they can get water at the restroom.
Yeah, but maybe we think of some signage or information with the branding of the refill stations to put at this location. And I, I'll definitely work on that as well as getting with BTO on how that's being shared.
All right.
No restrooms, get the quench buggy out there when we can.
Sounds great.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, mobility.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. All parking today, but happy to take questions on anything else. I did want to add in more or less a question related to the airport lot paragraph with the runway project kind of moving along here. I wanted to understand if you would like us to work on this idea of overnight oversized parking. So vehicles more or less over 20 feet or a combination vehicle, car and trailer. If you'd like us to work on a plan for oversized overnight parking.
I thought that was at the ice rink, I thought that's what it's.
We can't do oversized, so we can do overnight parking at the ice rink, but we don't have a good place for oversized. So.
Just from previous conversations, I know that Dick would be interested in that, I don't know how others feel.
And I think we've heard from some competing members that like having that in the community, so I'd love to see where it could be feasible.
Yeah, if it's feasible.
Yeah, and we still have our time limits of 14 days in a calendar year. We just need to be, we need to be strict on enforcing that, but.
Yeah.
For not to see it on McCain, if possible, in the area, especially as we talked about like oil spillages and things that could happen with those oversized vehicles and overnight vehicles.
I agree.
My preference, strong preference.
And I think just to highlight, you know, the ice rink parking is somewhat, well, it sounds limited, it is limited.
Yeah.
Right, and so we, during the busiest times, we may have a parking all of the vehicles that now park overnight. So it'll be, I guess, a good opportunity to again, ask lodging to message to their guests that, you know, they should carpool, that take other forms of transportation because that overnight is going to be more limited than it was before.
Is there, just having experience out at the ice rink, is there any space for additional parking out at the ice rink? Or have we paved pretty much everything that's out there?
Not know the answer to that, I believe we have, but.
Yeah, I think you have, we've pretty much gone up like as close to the wetlands.
Yeah, that's what it's called, okay.
Yeah, any future work over there would, you'd be getting into the island and redoing that. We're heading towards like a train park, so yeah, it's.
It's tight.
Yeah.
It's very well utilized.
Maybe some efficient stuff you could do on the backside that might free some stuff up in the front, but it's, it's pretty tight, yeah.
I mean, I would say that the reason I'm asking is because it is not easy, as you've already kind of brainstormed, it's not an easy solution. So we will continue exploring ideas for it.
And we do want to balance that use with the use of the ice rink too, so that we still have the appropriate amount of parking for, you know, guests that are frequenting.
Would CMC be willing to work with us in the summers, like when they're not in session or?
We can talk to them.
Going to piggyback on that with maybe the school district, right? In the summer, some pavement that's not used as much.
I'm, I'm just laughing because Breckell and Upper Blue have like the world's tiniest parking, but maybe. Pretty bright, that'd be great if you'd look into that.
We'll keep looking, I'll hopefully report back next meeting. The only other comment I have is locals appreciation month pre-parking in all town-owned lots is May 1st through 31st.
I'm just remembering last year, we've had some complaints, both like at the beginning of the month. And sometimes people don't understand that it's in the lots and in not on the streets. So maybe Brooke and her team can just pay a lot of attention to pushing that correct information because people seem to struggle with that concept.
Sounds good.
Matt, on the parking data, either Wellington lot is not on there or it's whited out. Is there, is that because it's kind of half permit and half open? Or, or is that, I'm just kind of curious where that falls in since that is kind of a talk on the pathways discussion.
That is a good, that is a good question, I just noticed that as well, so I need to look into that, I don't know the answer, let me look into that and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is heat tables?
Yeah, we're, we're working on fine tuning them there, kind of all over the place, but we'll get there.
Yeah. Sustainability. Jesse and Teddy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We wanted to take a few minutes with you to present some data from phase one of the e-delivery program. But before I do that, I wanted to pause and answer any questions that you had on the rest of the memo related to materials management, building code, adoption, et cetera.
Questions?
No, it seemed like it was a great turnout for that first.
It was a great turnout, yeah, it was covered in the Summit Daily, we had a great turnout, we had a lot of interest in the scholarship program and equipment purchases as part of our grant that we have. So certainly more to come, we just issued our RFP for technical assistance today. And we hope to have that person, that consultant on board by April 9th.
Yeah, Jesse, does the HERS rating go away with the new building code adoption?
There's a energy performance pathway option that keeps HERS alive. ERI is, ERI is the generic term for that, HERS is a very specific rating, but ERI pathway is, is what you're talking about.
Jesse, when we're working with people on getting ready for universal recycling, are we pushing out this information about these $75,000 grants through HC3?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Seems like a lot of money, we should be hoping that our partners.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move into the e-delivery.
All right, great. Well, thanks for the opportunity to kind of recap where we've been and where we're looking to get your direction on going in phase two. But just to kind of set the stage and for the record, this pilot program was derived, we started conversations about this program in 2023. It was part of the Blue River Pathways Project, how do we get trucks off the Riverwalk, et cetera. And the town of Vail, at the time, had just wrapped up their pilot and had gone into full implementation of their program. And so we did a lot of visiting of their facilities, talking to their contractor 106 West, who is the contractor for the program currently. And really started to learn about, you know, what were the, the benefits of, of doing so. So when we went to move forward with the pilot, we set out with three goals. Those goals were to improve safety and guest experience in and around Breckenridge's Main Street and Riverwalk, to reduce vehicular traffic and improve delivery efficiencies, and finally to reduce idle times and vehicle miles traveled, improving local air quality. So with those goals in mind, 106 West came in and helped us try to understand the lay of the land, how many vendors we had in town, what kind of deliveries we were seeing. And at the time, it was recommended that we stand up a facility that was 4,700 square feet. Staff had proposed initially to do that in the Tiger Dredge Lot. An opportunity arose with the, the sale of the Parkway Center to Kentrow Group that we were able to get in and have discussions with them about their vacant lot at 480 North French, which is where the facility is today. But that facility, in order to save on costs, since it was initially pitched as a pilot, and we don't have a permanent location for that, the size of the facility was brought down to 2,400, 2,300, 2,400 square feet, which is what we've been operating out of since November when we got CO'd. So since November, the program started with six vendors, we're now up to 12. We've taken over 700 trucks off the road and counting that every day, that just ticks up. Over 100,000 cases of product and an estimated 24,000 pounds of local emissions. We also have been gathering data, we, I say we, the folks at 106 who see the trucks on a daily basis have been gathering data over the course of this phase one to better understand who's left, how much volume do they have and what the impact would be if we were to remove those off the road. So now I'll walk you through the slide deck that kind of lays this out in numbers. So we talk sort of in an operational unit, that's two team members and one cart. And so that is the, the, the group that goes and makes the runs. And right now, we have three operational units with a fourth budgeted to begin in the spring of 2025. And then it is estimated that we'll need six operational units should we go in the future to full implementation. So what's hard to see here, just because of the bar at the top, is that Wednesday and Friday. So this, this depicts Wednesdays and Fridays in the height of the season, those tend to be the busiest days for deliveries. So this is essentially your busiest day or your worst-case scenario, depending on how you look at it in terms. worst case scenario, depending on how you look at it in terms of space. The bottom line is the twenty four hundred square feet, the red line at the bottom, that's the space we currently have today. And the forty seven hundred square feet was what was originally proposed. And you'll you'll see how the bars fill in over um, the next couple of slides. So the color, the colors don't really matter that much. Green is is the food, blue is beverage. And then the other things are uh operational space, space for carts to store uh and charge overnight, um, space to move around. I mean, this is logistics. You have to have a warehouse and space to move around. Um, and then a a handful of other products like linens, for example. So you can see here that on a Friday, the graph on the right, um, that we are, we are bumping up and the peak hours of delivery times up against the space that we currently have. And that is with the twelve active distributors um, we have in the program today. Now, this is not static. Um, this graph can fluctuate a little bit, depending on truck deliveries, weather, scheduling with the docking software, et cetera. But this is a good snapshot of, you know, full peak hour, everyone on the go. So we are looking for direction from the town council on phase two. I mentioned that we have budgeted adding one operational unit in May and one operational unit will get us one of two things. Scenario one here is Shamrock, and we wanted to present these numbers because we've heard loud and clear over the course of this pilot that we are a Shamrock town. We have get a lot of deliveries from Shamrock. We want to make sure that we're trying to target them. Initially, they were not interested in the program. Now they're very interested in the program. So we have some changing dynamics even just in their willingness to participate. Um, but Shamrock, because we are a Shamrock town, has so much volume that if we were to take on Shamrock alone, as you can see from this graph, we will not just a little bit exceed, but rather significantly exceed the current space that we have today. Now, again, peak times can be shaved off for a variety of different scheduling strategies, et cetera. But Shamrock comes when Shamrock comes, they deliver and they leave. There's not a lot of flexibility with Shamrock. The flexibility comes with the other vendors who are part of this program. And then this would be scenario two. So beginning in May, we could take on nineteen additional distributors. They are arguably much smaller than Shamrock, but collectively, they are larger than Shamrock. And so we can measure that in terms of trucks per week, and we can also measure that in terms of hours per week on the road. And so with Shamrock, we get about forty hours a week that truck is on the road. And with these nineteen distributors, we're at about fifty eight hours per week. So you can also see here that those nineteen distributors, we are much closer to the twenty four hundred square feet that we have as part of our facility today. And we have a lot more flexibility within those nineteen distributors to kind of schedule them out throughout the day so that we shave off those peak times that are illustrated there, that are above the red line. Um, so a couple of other things um that we want to mention, just related to, you know, we're going to talk about Shamrock versus, right? So Shamrock versus the other nineteen is that we can take these nineteen on with the operational unit we have budgeted in May and do nothing else and remain within our budget um and expectations for phase two. If we bring on Shamrock um and that additional operational unit, we still need to move. We still need to free up some space in the dock. It could look like adding dock space. But more affordably, we think that it might look like adding an outbuilding for the carts. So we'd be moving the carts out of the warehouse space and into an outbuilding. That outbuilding needs charging infrastructure. Um, we have not priced out the electrical upgrades to do that, but we do have an estimate on what an outbuilding might cost. That might trigger lease discussions with Kentrow Group. Um, the lease is up July thirty first, twenty twenty six. So we don't have a lot of time under the current lease. And and what we do late, you know, after that is TBD. I mean, there's, I think, a lot of uncertainty related to um, what happens after that lease. So scenario one with Shamrock would require an additional outbuilding, or, I mean, I think, I think we would have to flesh that out if that is your direction. Or we could take the other nineteen and remain within budget and not do any capital improvements as it stands today. So we'd like to understand from council sort of the direction there, and we can answer questions and fill in some of the data points for you. But I think also, after we discuss this phase, we want to talk a little bit more about what might full implementation look like. Is that something we want to pursue? What kind of information do you guys need in order to make that decision? But I, but we can talk about that in a moment and just pause here and think through this phase two. And I'll look to my colleague here. Did I miss anything?
We're good for now and well, we'll go off your questions.
I want to pull up is the fourth slide on the one we just.
The full.
Yeah, no, your graph. Thank you. So this was a last minute addition, but we tried to lay out the the pros and, well, not even pros and cons, but just what scenario one requires and what scenario two would would do. So.
Yeah, so just working through this quick comparison, you know, Shamrock, we're looking, it's five trucks a week and we estimate about eight hours of delivery time that those trucks are spending in the downtown core. So it works out to be about forty hours a week. Um, the nineteen other distributors, it's about twenty five trucks a week. And um, one of six believes that those truck hours in town adds it to about fifty eight truck delivery hours per week. So um, it's still kind of removing additional truck delivery hours per week. If we go with the other um nineteen distributors, the other um, you know, difference here, Shamrock, as Jesse mentioned, we'd be probably needing some kind of additional building um, that would require additional capital expenditure uh and investment to the site. Um, whereas with the scenario two, with the other distributors, we we can do that with our existing dock and footprint that we have today without needing a a budget appropriation. And then um, and then just in terms of timeline for implementation for these next phase, scenario two, we can start that in May as soon as we bring onboard the additional operational unit. Shamrock, it's a little bit delayed or unknown just because it's dependent on the timeline of building the additional outbuilding um, in order to get that. And then the other one here is just, again, Jesse mentioned the the lease for that location is up in July of twenty twenty six. So we'd be investing additional capital into this location uh, when we don't fully know what the, where the final dock location will be, whether it's here or somewhere else. So that's just another thing we added to consider.
Of course, the uncertainty exists for both scenarios, but you know, all things being equal, we we know that scenario two was going to happen or the the current space, the current footprint was going to happen regardless. So.
Jesse, before we open it up for questions, can you please tell about um how Shamrock might be less impactful? We talked about it on the phone that um, yeah, there is some benefit to.
Yeah, so if we were to take those nineteen other trucks and fifty eight delivery hours, if you will, that would remove those trucks from current delivery zones where Shamrock rolls up, they want that delivery zone, it's not available. They park willy nilly in Ridge Street Alley, right? But if we were to take those nineteen other trucks off, arguably, those other delivery zones would be free. So Shamrock would be parking appropriately in delivery zones in the core of town. Of course, there is an enforcement piece to that, like maybe they choose not to, or they're they're just parking wherever they want. But but we could enforce it so that they were using delivery zones. But right now, they're just, they're full, they're coming at different times. Like, it's just, it's kind of the Wild West out there. And so we think that by pulling those other trucks off, we could at least target Shamrock to get into the delivery zones that are already designated. Yep.
Any questions?
I don't know. We, do those nineteen other distributors, like, are they a package deal? Like, what if we just get four of them to participate?
Yeah, so it's my understanding, one oh six has been doing outreach throughout this entire time, um, mostly to understand what each truck is bringing in so that they can do the math on this. Um, I would, I would think that they would they would bite off chunks of that nineteen over the course of the spring and ramp up to summer. Um, Jason is here with the mic. Look at you. All right. You want to answer that question?
Um, yeah, they do not come in a package. We just have to have discussions individually with those distributors. And some of those distributors, we already, we're currently having discussions with because we see some um, you know, some room in the pilot to start growing it uh, uh, immediately.
Okay, so we s- we still could have a scenario for the next few months where like, we have some of these guys in the delivery zone and Shamrock also needs to be.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a great point. So you're, you are still ramping up over the course. Um, and then there's a handful of vendors that we didn't identify that if we go to full implementation, we would take on in addition to Shamrock too. And those are ones that are trickling into the program as well, but we're just not capturing them as like from a space perspective. They're negligible.
Jesse, um, first off, I love the um cardboard piece. That's so great. In the restaurant, we talk about full hands in, full hands out. That's what you guys are doing, and I think it's fantastic. Uh, the peak hours that are shown in the graph, are those the average of the last three months that you guys have been servicing, or is that peak weeks like?
That's like peak scenario, worst case scenario. Uh, everything kind of comes in at once. Those trucks are kind of um, broken out by the time that they come in and the time they leave. And then new trucks come in, new trucks, you know, it's just a cycle throughout the day.
But that's not like week in, week out. That's maybe the.
Yeah, I would say it's like worst case scenario on last week, Christmas week, you know, President's Weekend, things like that. Multiple, I mean, definitely happens multiple times a year.
Right. And when we approved this uh pilot, we talked about um charging our distributors a nominal fee just to make sure the process works. What what was that fee and how has that worked in this?
Yeah, so the the phase one of the pilot has been entirely voluntary. We have not collected any revenue on the program. The Town of Vale, when they um passed the, when they moved from the pilot into full implementation, it did include an ordinance that then geographically, you know, required anybody within that service area to participate. Then they levied a docking fee accordingly, which is the, which is the financial model that we've been exploring. But what we've heard from vendors who are voluntarily in the program is that if everybody's not in, why should we vol- volunteer to pay, even if they are seeing efficiencies and savings? So related to the full implementation question or how we get there, what steps do we need to get there? We're thinking through ways to um, you know, how do we set our docking fee using Vale as a model? We know that our volumes are about thirty percent higher than Vale, so we think that we can, you know, use their methodology but have a a slightly higher docking fee perhaps. Um, but in terms of a level playing field, we're trying to think through ways, like if you're, if you're in the pilot and we charge you, how do we equally charge or incent those who are not in the program to do the right thing? And and we're starting to explore the docking fee or the um, delivery zone permit structure. So how can we use permits you're getting, that you have to pay to use the delivery zones and set that accordingly? So it's actually better to use the dock, right? So maybe we don't have to compel people, but rather just set the incentive so that it's easier to use the dock than it is the delivery zone. Does that, does that uh concept make sense?
It does, but I think, didn't we talk about that we were to charge them something during the pilot? No?
I think we talked about it.
Okay, but that then.
The council decided not to.
Have you guys considered um, instead of adding just one more unit, adding like unit being two people and a cart, could we add more people in carts in order to not experience um such high, such high peaks? Or would that just result in being overstaffed ninety percent of the time?
Yeah, I'll let Jason answer.
Um, no, that could, that would improve efficiencies, definitely. Part of the graphs that we're looking at now, um, I don't know what color it is, but part of it is move, it can, it it takes into account the movement that we're doing during the day, you know, per hour or something like that. So if we increased um carts and and people, yeah, we could increase uh some efficiencies there.
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and talk about how people feel about these two options, which is kind of Shamrock versus.
Everybody else.
All the other.
Almost everybody.
Whatever that, yeah, that's the one. Nineteen, yeah, Shamrock versus the nineteen others.
I'm too, I'm really impressed with the cardboard results and think that's only going to get bigger. Jay hit that nail right on the head. You know, full cart going out, full cart coming back. Uh, I think that happens a little bit with the kegs now, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, empty kegs coming back, cardboard. Yeah, and we um um, expect to start bringing dirty linens back to the dock at some point also and storing them there and having the linen companies uh pick up dirty linens there.
It's all great. Uh, as I look at the the build out of this, I think clearly we'd like to get Shamrock in. But I think the immediate impact of working with possibly up to nineteen other delivery companies keeps more actual trucks out of the downtown and lets us work our way into it. And Shamrock may still want it even more when they can't have it as we get ready to fully implement this. Personally, and I, I like the idea that rather than adding a building to get more space, let's get another cart and two more employees and and keep the stuff moving more, rather than cluttering the site with more temporary buildings and uh, electrical cords running around. So my suggestion would be, let's go for the nineteen others and start adding them as soon as we can. Let's uh look at how many carts and employees we can add to keep the stuff moving and hopefully keep building this.
You want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, I agree with Steve. I like scenario two, nineteen and fifty eight is way better than five and forty, so that's good. I also like kind of getting some clarity on the lease in July of twenty twenty six as kind of that Shamrock piece. Like, we'll want to understand what's going on with the lease and how to handle their capacity and if we need an extra building structure and where that would go. So I think that helps phase that. And then just one note, um, you referenced in here in the material management. I love that the cardboard's going back out. That's super cool. As that system evolves and you're looking at it, I would love if there's an ability for one of those structures, you know, for we don't need as much space in a structure, maybe one of those structures in a strategic spot that would be along the river and could be reused as like a community engagement space and more river space than trash enclosure. You get rid of one rather than, if there's a way to make the composting system kind of efficient and dialed like you've got going on with food delivery and not just refill that structure along the river, that would be a wonderful goal.
I I want to acknowledge that I hear you on that. Um, but the, but what we've been working towards is replacing one, one uh trash dumpster with a compost in order to get commercial compost down there. Because currently it's not available unless a business technically has space behind their back door. So that has not been looked at yet, but I I hear you and and I see your vision.
Some work on this. It's super cool to me to see the impacts it's making. And I know you're going to beat stuff up and and work through this and come up to a great solution. So thank you.
So just to make sure that um, I know Jay has some maybe other things to bring up, so I just want to get those out before we like, I don't want him to go to last and then everyone says like, ooh, I wish I knew that. So Jay, will you?
Thanks, Kelly. I I really do. I appreciate this. And I think that in either scenario, the town is winning a hundred percent. Um, just trying to provide some color on this so that when we look at those nineteen distributors, we're talking about cheese importers that may have um, a box truck that's ten feet long or Altamira that has a box truck that's fourteen feet long. When Shamrock comes. When Shamrock comes and comes through towns and comes through our alleys, they're in an 80 foot semi, you know, truck. And that is just so much more visible. And, you know, in anecdotally, you know, talking with the restaurant association and with people in the public and people on the Riverwalk, you don't hear, oh, you know, Western Slope's truck is still in our alley or Altamira's truck is really blocking up traffic. It's always the same thing. It's always Shamrock, Shamrock, Shamrock. And that's all you see up and down, uh, Main Street in our, um, in our alleys. And so the visibility of that one distributor, whether it's not as many truck hours is probably as impactful as the 19 other, um, uh, distributors there. So I think that's, that's important to note. The number of cases per drop is obviously very different. When Vale Coffee Roasters comes and picks out two cases of coffee, drops it somewhere and then moves on, that's a lot different than Shamrock pulling up, taking out their entire ramp, which goes from 80, an 80 foot truck to a hundred foot truck, right? Because the ramp taken up that there. And this delivery dri- driver sitting with his hand truck, making 20 trips in and out, in and out, and spending an hour and a half in that alley per restaurant or whatever it might be. And so the number of cases per drop is dramatically larger with Shamrock than the other 19, uh, distributors. Exceeding bandwidth, I, I, I hear you and I understand how that is. I have a, you know, just a thought on at least half of it is that, you know, we're talking about Wednesdays and Fridays are the two peak times. Shamrock doesn't deliver on Wednesdays. So that kind of evens out the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And obviously Fridays, they still be an issue on those peak times. But I do think that that kind of wiggles in nicely into a need period. And I do think that to make a decision on full implement, implementation, we really need to see a summer without these giant trucks in our, on our pathways, in our alleys, in our, in our Riverwalk. And I think that, um, a bet, maybe a more effective route is to really to see these giant broadliners that spend eight to 10 hours into, in our town, in our Coors Town, uh, be eliminated because these smaller guys, yeah, it's important and it's great. But they, they're in and out and they may only be making one stop in our town. So whether they make that stop at 106 West or at, you know, Clint's Coffee Shop and then Skedaddles, I don't see the impact as great. And so either way we go is going to be spectacular. It's going to be a win for the town. My personal opinion is even with the greater investment, I would love to see Shamrock off of our, out of our core of town.
They reconsider my, my card on that.
Really knew she played that card and.
I mean, Jay, how do you like, so it would result in having another building that we would have to pay for? And like maybe a million dollars of infrastructure that would just be in a year and a half, we'd be done with.
Maybe. And I think all those things.
Maybe in a year and a half, but maybe we'd get three years out of it, but it's for sure not going to be forever.
It probably will not be forever, but how can we make a decision on full implementation without taking that step? And, and maybe it's just punting, right? Maybe we say, hey, we find out what the cost of, of going with scenario one is and like, what's the dollar amount on that? And what is the impact? Can we go back to Kroger or that, um, those guys and say, hey, can we get an option for two more years or whatever it is? I guess my point is I'm not ready to say, yeah, it's easier to go scenario two. Let's just go that route. I would like to see us explore scenario one because I think it will give us a truer picture of what this is going to look like for our community and what the value is for the community.
So we do have, I can't remember if I mentioned the CapEx numbers. So for scenario one, if we were to do an outbuilding for the carts, which would basically take the carts out of the warehouse, stick them outside and then free up all of that space for, for extra deliveries and movement. We're looking at between 100 and 200K. The unknown is the electrical capacity that's out there. So that is also the unknown on the timeline because once we place that order with Excel for new service, we're on their timeline. But the building itself was estimated to be around $100,000. To do, uh, if we were to do full implementation at that site, so to take all 19 plus Shamrock, we're looking at a little over a million to add essentially another 2,000 square feet of, uh, Doczilla Dock. So we would get, um, another bay or two. And then, you know, whether we rearrange the ramps or whatever, but basically you're doubling it in size almost. And it's about another million dollars to do that. So those are the two numbers for scenario one. And then if you were to fully implement on that site, which we're not proposing, but that's the estimate that we have.
All right, Carol, do you want to go?
Yeah, one more time, the number, the estimate, the implement, the cost.
Yeah. So for scenario one with Shamrock, adding an outbuilding, we're 200,000 at the high end. To, if we were to do full implementation at that site, it would be adding more dock space at a million dollars, a little over a million dollars.
Yeah. Um, so I would, I'd stick with scenario two with staff's recommendation. I think you had a lot of great valid points and that was one, um, question I noted that I forgot to ask. Just what are the vehicle types of the 19 other distributors? And it is a valid point that those are significantly less impactful. But I'm sticking with scenario two from that cost standpoint, um, which will be, I think, the, one of the main driving deciders if we do for full implementation, the cost, I think. With this pilot that's been incredibly successful, we've heard a lot of positive feedback from community members, businesses that feel, I don't think it's hard to imagine what it would be like without Shamrock. And that's something that I hope will work towards, but it's all dependent on what will be the town subsidy annually for full implementation. So to ramp up this program without significant added dollars, that's why I'm going to stick with scenario two.
Good.
One question for you, Jay. You, you mentioned like hearing a lot of negative feedback in the restaurants about the Shamrock problem. Is that equal to the amount of positive feedback you're hearing about this program in general? Or does the Shamrock negative feedback really outweigh the positive feedback you're hearing?
Well, I think they, they lead into each other, right? That the program's so successful and these guys are doing such a great job that there's a desire to have Shamrock out of the alleys and be part of the program. I think if the program wasn't successful, then they're, and everyone uses Shamrock, then it's like, no, don't put them in the program. But it's quite the opposite that the program's been very successful.
And I'm sorry, because this is also for you. Um, based on what you said about the math for Shamrock, like the size of Shamrock's trucks, do they just not fit in the current delivery zone spaces that we already have set up? Like, are, if we attempt, if we get those 19 others off, we free up all this delivery zone space, do the Shamrock trucks not even fit in those delivery zone spaces?
Some are bigger than others.
Basically, enforcement would be a big problem because with, um, 25 stops per route for the Shamrock trucks and with hundreds of cases, they don't want to be across the street. They want to have the ramp go right to the back door to make that. And that's why you see them kind of jackknifed through the alleys is because they want to short this path. If you're carrying two boxes of coffee, you don't mind crossing the road. If you have 50 trips on a dolly, then you mind that extra time.
And then Steve and Todd both had talked about like, hey, let's just add this extra cart team. Does that automatically mean we need an outbuilding for the carts? Because is storing that cart going to displace what we save? Like at what point does that cart outbuilding become?
Certainly not all carts are operating at once. So there's a rotate because they're electric and they need chargers. There is a rotation. So there needs to be a spot for, I don't know how many carts at a time, but more than one or one for sure now, and then more than one, but.
Yeah, um, mostly it's, um, we have a cart as a backup and that's kind of just in there. If we added, um, you know, two more and, you know, more people, then all those carts would be out there, um, delivering at the same time.
Okay. So that wouldn't cause a storage problem in the current. Okay. And I think I'm still option two. I hear your concerns, Jay, but I just don't know that we can. I'm concerned about the outlet. Like I would like to see outlet, option two plus figuring out either how to charge for a delivery zone permit or a docking fee so that we can start getting ready to ramp up in a responsible way.
All right. I am also very supportive of, um, number two, all the 19. And, um, I agree with what Carol said. I think the like most important part of this is that it's a pilot and it's been extremely successful. And if Shamrock's not a part of it, we still know that it's a successful pilot and that we really want everybody to be a part of it. So I think just working towards, um, full implementation is really what we want to do. And hopefully we will have a partner in that. All right. Do you need anything else?
No. Uh, did you have anything else, Dan?
No, I think, uh, I think we got what we were looking for. Um, you know, we're still, we're still working towards getting Shamrock into the program.
Right.
Um, it's just kind of the order of operations. So, um, we, our, our goal is to get them in as soon as possible still.
I did just want to say to 106 West, you guys have been amazing and all of your crews, I see them working super hard, big smiles on their faces. They just seem like a great group of people and we've heard tons of positive feedback. We could not be happier with this experience.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Um, moving on to the housing work group presentation, it's really just the meeting minutes. Do people have any quick questions? No? Yes? All right. Thank you. Okay. Um, let's just go through these. So BOSAC meeting minutes. Any questions? I think we're okay. Thank you very much for showing your wonderful face. Financials. Pam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, in your packet, you have the financials for February. The first report shows us the two months of 2025. February is largely reflective of January tax collections. Overall, we're a year to date 700,000 above budgeted revenues in the excise fund and 400,000 in comparison with prior year. Sales taxes currently flat in comparison with budget and behind 100,000 in comparison with prior year. Accommodations taxes flat in comparison with budget and flat in comparison with prior year. Real estate transfer tax is ahead 800,000 in comparison with budget and 700,000 in comparison with prior year. For the month of January, net taxable sales came in behind 6%, seeing slight declines in all of our categories. The largest decline we see is in, um, construction. Our retail in town in comparison with 2024 for the month of January was behind 6.59%. And retail out of town in comparison with January of 2024 was ahead by 2%. As I've been mentioning, real estate transfer taxes coming in strong. January and February were almost both months double what we saw last year. The majority is being shown in single family homes and, um, in second place, time shares. I am happy to take any questions before I pass it on to Tracy.
Thanks Pam.
Yep.
Any questions on this part?
Pam, do you, I know it's hard to say, but like looking through your crystal ball at February, are we still trending 6% down as far as you can tell?
Um, I would say similar numbers, yes.
Okay, Tracy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You've got the February financials, overall favorability to budget of three and a half million. Most of it is attributed to budget phasing at this point. Nothing really stand out, um, greater than the comments that are on the summary sheet.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Tracy? All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a quick five minute restroom break. Sorry Becky, I know you've been waiting. Sorry Becky, I know you've been waiting. Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on with the nicotine flavor ban and tobacco licensing revisions.
Here, I will take a lead on this, but then look to Keely and Scott for assistance at times. Um so in the memo, we tried to provide you with just a um timeline of. The tax and how that occurred and then just a reminder of the presentation that you had in October of last year. With the students from that high school and representatives from youth and family. Where they talked about the impact of flavored tobacco nicotine products on the youth in our community. And at that time, council was supportive of considering a flavor ban. Um we've talked about it with the other jurisdictions in the county. And all of the municipalities are at this point moving forward with at least consideration by their councils of a flavor ban. Um the county is not because they don't have the legal authority to ban. They can license, they can, you know, restrict certain things, but they don't have the ability to all ban something. And so it would be the municipalities that would be moving forward with this. Um so based on the presentation that you had and and further discussions that we've had with youth and family. And representatives from CU and shoots, we've. Put together, thanks to Keely, a colorful um red lined version of our existing ordinance. Um and there's a lot in there and there's also a clean copy, so hopefully everyone had a chance to look at that. But really what we've done in there is tried to address the five bulleted points that are in the summary of the memo. And that's a flavor ban, a ban on sales and coupons. Um and then the other three things are a cap on licenses restricting the proximity of licensed establishments. Um to various, you know, youth facilities as well as marijuana dispensaries. And then prohibiting tobacco products in uh businesses that have a pharmacy. So we're happy to answer any questions you have, but I just wanted to clarify. Kind of first thing that staff fully supports the flavor ban. And not having sales of any tobacco product or coupons for any tobacco product. The other items uh are certainly would limit the availability of tobacco in the community. If we were to cap the number of licenses or even if you you saw in there, there was some language that upon renewal. If you had two businesses that were closer than uh an allowable distance, that we could not license one of them. Or we could have an exemption and sort of grandfather the people that are in their current locations to stay there. Um those two things plus the pharmacy, which the only one we have is at City Market. Um staff doesn't feel strongly that those are necessary in our community. And I think you saw in the memo, um Keely had an opportunity to speak to the liquor marijuana licensing authority. They also didn't feel strongly that we have any kind of issue with our current establishments, current licensees. And with their proximity to one another or other businesses, schools, things like that. So um again, we're happy to answer any questions. You see, we have folks from youth and family and public health here. Um but we just wanted to clarify that piece, uh at least uh as it aligns with those bullets. What can we answer for you?
And Dylan already passed this.
Dylan did pass it. Um the other towns are looking at it and they've, I think, either have it set for their council agendas. Or they will be sending it fairly soon. Um I do want to point out, and I know it was in the memo, that we did speak to the government affairs. And another lobbying person associated with seven eleven and they did, you know, they talked through the impact to their business. I think there was a story in the Summit Daily today where some businesses talked about what they would likely see as an impact to their businesses. So we did include some of that information in the memo. I think, you know, it is a reality that if you're removing this product. From shelves, it will have an impact not only on the revenue that businesses are taking in. But also in the revenue that the town and the other communities are taking in, um because we do have a fairly significant tax on these products. And if by banning them, we're, you know, reducing the amount of revenue we have coming into our um excise fund as well, so.
Okay, any questions for Shannon or Keely? Did you have anything to add?
Maybe for Keely, I don't know, anyone can take it. Most of the towns seem to have about nine of these establishments. Is there any like? Common figure about number of establishments per versus like either square size of a town or population? Like is this kind of a nor- if you compared this to like a a Denver ratio, is this normal?
Great question. I I don't have that data. Um I don't know if anybody from youth and family has any idea.
Thing I I guess I would say is we've seen some licensees drop off because it just wasn't. It didn't make financial sense for them. So I think what we see, at least in this community, is the market kind of taking care of. You know, how much demand is there? And then you see a, you know, an appropriate number of establishments. There was um a story I just heard the other day about Denver because they've also initiated a flavor ban. Which I think this is the second time, the first time the mayor um sort of vetoed it or withdrew it. And now it's passed again and they're figuring out how to implement it because they have a lot of establishments. Um so my guess is they're also, they have that demand, right? Kind of like being in Florida and having a Walgreens on every corner.
Any questions for Shannon?
So unincorporated Summit County will still have these then?
Which is a problem. I think we all acknowledge that that's a problem and. Um you know, I don't, I don't know that there's a solution to that beyond additional enforcement of those areas. To ensure that they're not selling to you. If if you guys want to speak, you can come on down.
Not at the expense of lives.
Hi, do you want to just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Amy Wineley, the Director of Public Health for Summit County.
Welcome, I'm Becky Dune.
Becky Peltier, Health Promotion and Prevention Specialist for Summit County Government.
Thank you. All right, so um do you guys have anything, any just quick background that you wanted, like your? You seemed like maybe you wanted to say something in response to some of these questions, but I just don't want to launch into a whole nother presentation.
Well, as far as the ratio question goes, I don't know the answer to that, but we have to remember that we have a visiting population that comes. And increases our population to a pretty high amount. And in those cases, I would say we probably have less retailers. Than maybe other areas that go up to one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand on any given weekend. But you know, as far as the county and unincorporated go, I think we have. We have fewer retailers and not all of them are selling flavored products. Some of them have already pulled it from the shelves. There are corporations since all of this started in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, when we implemented our initial three trifecta of policies. That we knew was going to help reduce youth use and initiation. Um you know, a couple of them just um corporation wise have stopped selling. Walgreens is one of those, CVS, so Target is another during that time. Um as far as the revenue goes, you know, the whole catalyst for doing this was really because we had a higher youth use rate. Um compared to the rest of the state. And yes, that has gone down in our high school population, but we hear from middle schoolers. And even fifth graders when we're in there doing Catch My Breath curriculum, that they're really intrigued by flavors. Um it sounds kind of fun. Um and we know that these policies also help not only prevent initiation and youth uh use. But also help people to to get off of it because the flavor is um, you know, hiding the fact that e-cigarettes. Can deliver a massive dose of nicotine and become very addictive, especially with a developing brain. And the revenue, so the revenue was never meant to supplant general funds or anything. It was really the catalyst for it. The ballot language was all about protecting the health of our community and the health of our kids specifically.
I think the memo has, there's five establishments in Summit County, unincorporated Summit County.
Thanks, Amy. Um I did visit at the high school with Becky and some of the students who came and spoke with us. And I just, um the one question I did ask is how much um. E-cigarette, are they getting locally? Like, are they ordering them? Is there something else? And the vast majority are getting them here locally, whether it's from shoulder taps or walking in and buying it themselves. So they're absolutely getting it from um from people, the, you know, sellers in our community. Any other questions?
Yes, um Amy and Becky, thank you. Um could you speak to those other three provisions that we talked about? Maybe including a proximity provision, the others, do you have a strong opinion on those?
Well, all of those policies strengthen strengthen um what we have here in our community. We know that the the three policies we passed in twenty nineteen were really helpful. This one is just another piece of that puzzle on a continuum of curtailing um the addiction that's occurring generation after generation. It strengthens your policy, that's all I can speak to it.
Thank you.
All right, so are people supportive of this policy? Are we? Suggestions, Steve, did you want to pick us off?
Mayor, could I just say, I think the questions were.
Oh yeah.
A little, some of them were a little oddly framed, sorry about that. So I think the, you know, number one question is, do you just, do you still support the flavor ban and no coupons? And then for the others, would you like to see a cap? Um would you like to limit locations and density of businesses? And if so, grandfather in existing businesses? And then do you want to prohibit in locations where there's pharmacy? So just to kind of simplify those three.
Thank you.
To avoid any confusion.
Great, so flavor ban, then number one is, do you support the flavor ban? Number two is the cap look in location and then number three is the locations with pharmacy. So who wants to start?
Um I can. The first two, flavor ban and um limit sales or coupons, I agree with both of those. The other two, I guess I'd lean. More towards staff to see how it would be implemented, but the fact that we have the number of licensees going down. I don't know if those last three are. Necessary.
Who wants to go next, you wanna?
Yeah, absolutely, and I I agree with Carol, I think um limiting the going forward with that with the coupons and the flavors a hundred percent. And then um in talking with Shannon earlier today, I uh got clarification that it it does not seem that a cap. Or uh is necessary right now or the pharmacy ban that it's um, you know, we're set up in a place that working pretty well.
I agree with Jane Carol.
It was my initiative to get this started and I am still a hundred and ten percent in favor of the flavor ban. The sales and the coupons and all of that. I think as far as capping locations, if we're banning this product. Doesn't seem to me like any new locations are gonna spring up, so I think that'll be self implementing. Limiting locations. Would make some sense. We don't let there be locations within X number of feet of a school. Because that's kind of what we're working on anyway and I I have to shudder when I, every time I drive from Frisco up here. And look at the little convenience store right outside the high school and all the kids going in and out of there after school every day. But that's not Breckenridge, so I can't do that about that. I don't, likewise, I don't think location with associated with pharmacies is a big issue for us, so. I would be in favor of a location limit as it was viewed from schools.
Because I think they'll. I mean, even if we had the location, we would still grandfather in the people who currently have them. So I just, I think I agree with um staff's recommendation, which is definitely the flavor ban and no coupons. Um and then the other two, I don't think are necessary in Breckenridge. All right, thank you both for coming and thank you for all the work you're doing with our youth. Yeah.
Get this cleaned up and bring it back to you for the first reading.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the driving range netting town project. And all we're talking about here is um if people have questions about the procedure. Because we're gonna talk about this tonight at our public meeting. Any questions about procedure?
So just a heads up, I'll be presenting tonight, Ellie's um out today. Um one question for you, do you need any visual graphics to throw up or are we good with what you know from the packet?
I mean, you'll have the packet that's up there or not?
Uh I just kind of filling in, I I did.
Oh, okay.
Buy anything to Helen, but if.
Yeah.
If you'd like to have it up there for the night meeting, I can maybe work with.
I mean, we all have it right here, but is that fine for the?
Uh sometimes nice for the community to have it.
Okay, so if you could get it so that you could at least just project what's what we have in our packet, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a great question. Um all right, and we are finally to the runway subdivision development. Development contract discussion. I don't know who's.
Fine stuff.
Were they um shocked that we went so fast? After going so slow for so long. Suzanne's here. Really. Behind for a few minutes there. Thank you for coming. Sorry, we pulled a fast foot on you.
Um good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just see what type of questions we had and kind of start a discussion about the potential developer contract uh for the runway subdivision.
So um who wants to kick us off with questions? There's a lot of deal points going through. I'll just um remind you that the questions that we need to answer sort of more specifically at the end of the packet. Are, does the council support the developer fee of seven percent? Does the council support income testing on the townhome units? Is the council supportive of the general terms of the deed restriction, including the lottery? Is the town council supportive of the developer units as requested? Um any general comments on the deal points? And then based on this direction, is town council prepared for staff to return at our first April meeting? Um with a development contract. Including the terms that we discussed today. So that's the direction of this conversation. We're gonna try to get to the answer on all of those. Who wants to kick us off with questions? You don't have to. Do everything right now, but if you have any questions, then we could start there. Jay, you wanna?
I can.
Great.
Thank you guys for uh preparing this. I think it's it's great. Um on the developer employee units, I was just curious if we were to, if we were looking at a specific type. If it, um you know, looking at the numbers, the most highly subsidized uh units are those townhomes. And the duplexes uh from a town standpoint, so I'm just curious where those um developer employee units would fall. In which um unit type?
Um previous conversations, there were no townhomes included, but I'm gonna let uh our potential developer answer that one.
And Alan Sabo for the record. Um sorry, the wind is blowing. So we were thinking, I have three folks, one of them is actually the guy who's out on site every single day at Stables. Um and no matter what builder we go with, I'm pretty much. Um, and no matter what builder we go with, I'm pretty much, pretty sure he's coming with me. So he needs a home. And that was the first person that came to mind for me. And that was why I started thinking about this again. I know I asked for this the last time around, but, um, and then I have two other potential folks that are on the project that need housing. And so, um, he would definitely not qualify for townhome. Like, he's my most, you know, important person to house. Um, and then, um, the other two, I think maybe cottage and maybe a three-bedroom, single family or something like that. So I think all of them would be in the single family type. So, um, that's, that's kind of what we're thinking about. But I don't, and I wouldn't have anything to do with, all I'm doing is saying, can these guys get to the front of the line?
Right.
Since they put in dedicated years and years of their life. I'm not asking for money. I'm not asking for the unit. That's all I'm asking for is that some of the folks that are, have been really dedicating their life to the town of Brack and making this workforce housing stuff work, that they don't have to drive.
Do you want to grab the mic over here so you don't have to be kneeling? I'm sure there's going to be another question. Suzanne, I think, um, one of the, the questions addresses the developer fee of seven percent. And just curious to remind me, it was five percent at Stables, is that right?
It's between five and seven, but in the end, it's around three, three and a half. Just because I've had to utilize some of those funds for like uphill units. We didn't really take into consideration that their foundations were different than the other foundations on the flatter lots. Um, and so we've kind of used it as a contingency over there. So I'd say in the end, we're going to be around three, three and a half percent.
And then with the seven percent, I know that, um, not all of the costs incurred get that seven percent, but ballpark, it's 10 million plus or minus.
I, I think our construction loan right now, we're thinking is about ninety-two to a hundred. We don't, obviously don't have bill, bids in. But, um, and that's for vertical construction. And then the infrastructure piece is about, um, we're thinking it's twenty-seven, twenty-eight million, similar to what we talked about at the last town council meeting. And, uh, so we would be charging our fees on the infrastructure, actual infrastructure costs and the vertical construction costs. So, um, and, and those fees are really, I, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's similar to like what you do. Like you charge 25 bucks for salad. You're not making 25 bucks. You have staff, you have other things you're paying for. We have expenses, we have overhead. I have four people working on stables. So I have a full-time accountant in my office working. I have two off-site bookkeepers working on it. You know, it's a lot of work. So, you know, bank draws, all that, insurance audits, it's constant. So.
I think if, um, along those lines, I think it would help council to understand better what kind of is I'd be
Expenses.
Ten million.
Yeah.
Um, other than like the accountant and the insurance and stuff.
Yeah, we can do that.
Sorry, uh, the warranty section under 22C. Uh, it shows that it is a two years from the date of acceptance. And I was just curious, um, you know, we've, all we know is the experiences we've been gone through. And, you know, we've seen, um,
Disasters.
And so I just want to make sure that this is going to be our workforce in there and not to burden them with, um, defective things that are not, um, incurred until the, the items are tested, right? And so, two years might not get the homeowner through the first winter for the electric heat pumps or the boiler or whatever it might be. And I was just, um, I would love to see that warranty doubled to four years, uh, in that personally. And because I think that is a part that directly impacts our, our workforce.
Yeah. I don't know if you know this, but, um, the state of Colorado has some laws regarding warranty. And it really is actually six years if you wanted to sue someone over it. Um, so, um, keep that in mind with your other projects. But anyway, um, yeah, we can figure out some language around that, I think. My issue is that obviously I subcontract the construction piece of this. And so the builder's working for me, I need to negotiate with him what his warranty will be. But I think if the town council directed me that I needed to have a certain number of years, then I would negotiate with them that they also have that warranty.
Great. And I think that would be, go a long way to protecting, you know, the, the residents that are living in there and, and making a home.
Yeah.
Sorry, where did you land on when he asked you about the expenses? Were you?
She'll provide us with a list.
Add that at a, at a different time.
I, I can, I can actually provide that to, um, the housing department in the next week or something. I have, you know, all my employees, how much, what percentage of time they're spending on this project versus anything else, like stables is still kind of an overlap right now, right? Um, so I'll, I'll get that all dialed in and it needs to be over six years, right?
Right.
Plus, we also, I mean, there are lots of other additional things that cost us money and, and our liabilities for the future. Like we have to, you know, per the state, we have to warranty this project for six or seven years. So we have to have insurance through that period. We also, um, we also, you know, have just random other expenses that I can just lay out there for you that, you know, so it's really a thirteen-year thing that I'm looking at rather than just six years. So.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Is the restrictive covenant the same that we're using at the stables?
We haven't fully developed the restrictive covenant, but we think that it will be similar to what we had at stables. With the addition of potentially the light deed restriction as well.
Got it.
But still looking at like three percent appreciation cap, two percent real estate, uh, commission. Percent probably capital improvements, very similar.
Oh, that's great. Has there been any exploration of like a retirement kind of buyout program at all? And I don't want to go too far in the weeds there, but like, is that something that maybe makes sense to add in on the front end?
We can definitely look at what that would look like. We've never done any sort of, um, buyout of retirement. We've always just had, after you've been in the unit, seven years and you reach a certain minimum age, you can retire in the unit. But are you looking for, if it would be at a, a different timeframe or how to make it not deed restricted anymore or?
No, just thinking more along the lines of like, how do you free up housing when folks are done working and maybe thinking about moving on? And how do you free up?
Oh, buy them out of the, yeah, that's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, just chew on it. Thanks for taking a few minutes there on it.
Yeah.
Else?
I don't have any questions that haven't been asked.
Can you just quickly remind us of the lottery process?
Um, lottery process would be very similar to stables. I don't know how many phases this would be broken up into. Um, that will just kind of depend. The good news is on this one, we have probably a year before we start thinking about that. So we can have a lot more conversations, um, about the, the process and how that looks. But, um, one thing that we're not quite sure of yet is how we want to handle any priorities. Um, and that would be a separate dedicated conversation we want to have with all seven of you. But essentially each unit would be part of its own separate lottery, whether there's priorities or not to be determined. Um, and then go in order of selection. Then at the resale point, uh, each unit would also be put into a lottery, um, similar to kind of what's going on at Smith Ranch.
And all of the units would be put into the lottery, including any units that we might agree to, um, provide to the developer?
Correct, yes.
Um, Melanie, have you, just because it is so much money for a hundred million vertical and twenty-eight million infrastructure? Have you gone line by line to make sure, um, that the five to seven percent that um, the contractor is getting really every, that she should be getting a percentage of each of those line items?
For, for example, um, we had a discussion, I, I want to say it was end of last year, but there, there's kind of two different theories when it comes to construction. Depending on who your developer GC is, sometimes they will try and run the fee on all items. Sorry Suzanne, but personally, I don't see that as fair. That's kind of an issue we've brought up on other projects. There's certain aspects, um, like insurance, um, or staff, things like that, that that's part of your, you don't get to double dip, right? So like, yeah, like if you have a staff cost in there, you don't get to take that staff cost. It's probably already elevated to an extent to cover expenses of that staff member. And then charge the fee on top of that because then you're just double dipping there. So we did go through, um, and took those items out of what that overall calculation would be. Similar to what we did at stables and what we, I think, did with, um, I think we grabbed that at Uller, um, but other than that, it's, it's, it's been a problem and it really just depends on how you look at it. That's just kind of our perspective.
And are you pretty confident that, um, there isn't, there aren't places where she's double dipping? And there aren't places that we should be looking at more carefully? Does this make sense to charge the contractor fee on that?
Um, I can take a look at it again and that'll actually be transparent with the GMP. So once we bring that to you guys, um, you, you guys will be able to take a look at that line item by line item as well. I think that we've really kind of pulled every string we can on this one. And, you know, we did, we were talking about originally, she'd come to us at eight percent. Rick and I got her down to seven, um, last, at the end of last year. And to be honest, I, I feel really good about that. We were, uh, Keely had sent me a contract to review, just as we were kind of looking at how we wanted to handle this from Vale that was just executed by their new housing director, uh, fifteen percent. So I actually feel really good about this number. Obviously, stables was, was lower, um, but I compared it to Smith Ranch. Uh, I believe that was seven or eight, uh, as I talked to Lena. So I do think we're in a good spot here. And I think that, you know, some of our costs are coming from things like, these are larger units. But I think that's what we've heard, that, that that's the desire. So we've really tried to redline a lot of this and I just, I don't know how much more we can squeeze it. I will say, um, as you know, we got a million dollars last week, um, which, you know, it feels small, but in the grand scheme of things, we're proud of it. And, and we are going to continue to look at ways. I know there's some questions with grants right now, um, but that is the beauty of also doing the two tracks is we're going to continue to look at, okay, this is the infrastructure for track one, what else can we get on track two? Since we won't be contracted for it, we can continue to try and, um, look for funding.
Right. Um, before you move on, can we just clarify the lottery question? The developer units would not be in the lottery. Correct.
At initial.
Right, but
But at resale, they would be.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry that I didn't say it that way, but that is what I meant. Um, and then with the developer units, um, I guess I'm looking at those as they're going to workforce that have to qualify for those units anyway. And so I'm just curious, am I missing something? Is that, I'm just trying, I'm haggling in my head of like, should she get three units? Is that too many? Is too better? Should we give her any? And so I'm just trying to figure out if I'm missing something. If this is a bigger give from our community than we should be making. And so I'm, I'm interpreting this right. It's just, these are just more workers in our community and they would be having access.
Yeah.
And when they sell, it would go right back into the lottery.
Absolutely. Um, Lori and I talked about this at length and it, it's kind of the way that we started to think about it after our conversations with Suzanne was it, it's kind of as we're incentivizing, well, I guess to back up, it, it's a way to, to help some of the people working on the project kind of get into it. And then realistically, uh, my thought is actually it should keep our expenses a little bit lower on the vertical side because there is, on every project, we've been charged for housing costs. So if, you know, she has a subcontractor, um, that, for example, who she mentioned up at, at stables, there's a cost she's paying right now for that housing. So maybe that's a year of housing and then, hey, that, that fee's go, has gone away, which then comes back to us in a sense. So we've seen that across the board, um, even with local subs. Like there, there's just, as we know, housing's in a crisis. So there's fees that were charged, um, not exactly per diem, but in, in a sense.
Okay. All right, any other questions before we go on to? Yeah.
I had a question that really wasn't for the development team, more, more for Shannon and Keely. Should we have a mandatory mediation clause in this portion of the agreement between the developer and us?
Or dispute resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, the GMP contract will also have that. So, because there's multiple agreements that are part of this, but that's a good, we can put something like that in. It's not, I thought there was something in there already, but if it's not.
I don't think there is.
Yeah.
I, I would support.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone want to kick us off with the response to the questions or response to the ones that you feel strongest about?
I'm happy to start. I was
Go for it.
Last mic. I think the seven percent developer's fee is in line with, um, kind of the best case scenario that we could expect. And it's below market price. It's, uh, it's fair. And the mediation clause would allow any disputes on what that fee applies to, to be mediated. If it turns out that there's a disagreement that Melanie has with the developer, uh, as it goes forward. Um, I think that there are probably better, it's to the three units that would go to people working on the job by having them there 24/7, keeping an eye on the project, uh, testing the materials and the mechanics and the things that Jay's talking about. Do, are all these things working? We've got the, some of the first three units occupied by people who are going to be figuring out if everything's working the way it's supposed to work. So I support that. Deed restrictions, the lotteries, uh, as we did with the stables, I think is the best way forward. And I liked Todd's idea of thinking ahead to retirement of those units and getting them back as soon as we can. You know, there could be people that need a little incentive to get out when it's time to get out uh, and not, uh, just hang around unnecessarily. So I think we're headed in the right direction and fortunately, our experiences with stables lets us know how we'll work with this developer, so.
Um, thanks, Steve. Yeah, I agree with all your points there. Um, I like Jay's addition on the extended warranty there. I think, yeah, there just, it takes a few years sometimes to kind of work through, you know, materials and, and just make sure those homeowners are really set up for success. So I like a, an extended warranty there on, on the developer units. Um, maybe the warranty person doesn't want to live there. But yeah, support that and can understand where there's, yeah, a ton of value in having somebody on site seeing it all the time. And then also making sure that, yeah, they got a place to live and that's valuable. So.
Yeah, good stuff. Good work.
What about income testing?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I just.
For income testing? Okay. Who wants to go next?
Uh, sure.
Um, developer fee at seven percent, yes. Income testing, yes. Um, general terms of the deed restriction, yes. Developer units, yes. No comments on the deal points. And yeah, I think we're ready for a four-eight meeting.
You know, when looking at the developer fee as a portion of our subsidy, it's, you know, at the moment, it's twenty percent of our, of the town money that's going into there is going as a developer fee, not to the builder. Uh, and, and knowing that stables was five percent and we, and it got whittled down to three percent. We know more now. So I, I, I guess I personally would feel a lot more comfortable seeing it at five percent. Um, that's, you know, two million dollars difference, um, of our subsidy, which I think, uh, you know, when we're talking about fifty million dollars being put in by the town in addition, you know, in addition to this, the sales prices and everything like, I, I think that makes a dent in that. I, I think that makes a dent and that matters. And I, I think that will, I would love to see what is all encompassed in that, uh, currently in that $10 million that would go to the developer. Cause it's really not like making a salad, right? It'd be like me buying a salad and then selling it to you for 20% more. And so I, I, I think that that has some area to be flushed out with, especially because it's, you know, there's volume discounts. This is a giant project, six years. A lot bigger than, um, I'd love to see that go down to five percent. On the income testing, I'm good with that. With the deed restriction, I am comfortable with where we're at on there. I would be happy with the developer units, especially if we do come to a little bit lower terms on the fee. As I said, the warranty, especially if, if the developer does need a six-year policy anyway, because of state law, then let's write that in. Let's give our homeowners, our workforce, our residents, the comfort, knowing that they're protected and that they don't have to go to litigation. And then, um, yeah, I think that's, um, oh, and then just on those, um, developer units, I would like to see it be the single family units only. Those are my comments.
So starting the developer fee, you know, of course I agree with Jay, I'd rather town subsidize a million less. So, um, I, I would be interested at the seven percent, seeing what, um, what would that apply to? And maybe that'll inform me otherwise, but otherwise five percent. Income testing, yes. I think I've brought it up before and I might be in the minority and I don't know how feasible it would be. But even having some income tested units scattered throughout the product mix. So, um, community members of lower income can qualify for those single family cottages, the other units. On the lottery, I'm, um, in the general terms of the deed restriction, I am supportive of that. The developer units, um, I, I hear the reason and I understand that these community members building the project or essential community members, but we have essential community members throughout this community. So that's just a hard one, even though it's three units out of this whole development. I mean, this is something every single community member that needs housing would really want. So I have a hard time supporting that request. I think those were the questions. Thank you.
Yeah. So I guess with my questions earlier, the seven percent seems, I mean, I'd love to get it to five percent too. I just don't know that we can just magically make that happen. But, um, I do want to make sure that it makes sense that we're paying on every line item that we're actually paying on. Because it is a ton of money. As far as the income testing, I agree with income testing the town home units. I think in theory income or testing, um, throughout the neighborhood, it sounds really good. But I know that in the past, when we've thought about, or when we've looked at that, it's really challenging. Because then sometimes you get like a single person in a four-bedroom house because they income tested. And like when we're sitting up here at council, that's, you're imagining a family benefiting from this or, or, you know, I don't know. I think that like sometimes overworking on something can create challenges. So I'm, I would like for you to look into if there was a way to do that in a great way. But I, I would be supportive of looking into that. But I'm fine with just the town home units for now, or, or if you come up with a great way, please let us know. The general terms I'm fine with. The developer units, I do think that if we find that nothing, you know, that that seven percent fee, kind of every line is locked in and we're locked in at seven percent. I think three units seems like a pretty big ask. I'd be more comfortable with two. So I don't know. I mean, I'm outvoted right now, so I don't know how, if that matters. And then any general comments? I think I've already made them. So I think I'd like to see the draft for four eight for. Input. Any final things? Yeah.
Um, I think you brought up a great point on the income testing, um, and what unintended consequences arise out of that. Especially because of our conversation two weeks ago where, um, the, the option for the higher subsidy was chosen. And all of that money was just the duplexes. It had nothing to do with the town homes. So if all the additional subsidy that, you know, four, six, eight million dollars, you know, it's all like monopoly money. At some point here, when we're talking about such huge numbers, um, when you're, when you're, if we are adding that much more subsidy just for the duplexes, then, and that doesn't affect the town homes. Does it make sense to income test? And to your point, what unintended consequences does that have? And so I, I would love along with Kelly to echo her and see that flushed out a little bit better of, are we kind of, are we doing ourselves an injustice by subsidizing those duplexes, but allowing any income to go there? And if we did income test it to justify the subsidy, then what happens? You know, what's the unintended consequence? So thank you for that.
So would you be okay with us potentially exploring, usually when we look at income testing, right? We look at town homes and we look at 120 to 140 and below. Would you be okay with us maybe expanding that number and, and locking it in for, just as a potential example for the duplexes? Like you couldn't make above 150 or something like that, that you're keeping? People who are at like the 200 level and they're getting into those units that we overly subsidize. Like, would you guys be okay with us looking at a larger, um, number for income testing than we generally do?
Interesting question. I mean, I think, I think I'm, um, I don't love the idea of like every duplex then being income tested.
Totally.
But I would be, as long as you left some units not income tested, I'd be open to that. I don't know, others.
Hear you loud and clear. Well, no.
Explore that.
Okay.
Yeah, but I understand Jay's problem is like, but that's where we're spending, that's where we're giving so much money is on the duplexes. So I don't know, maybe staff can come back with some thoughts or interpretation on that.
We'll put something together and bring that back.
Yeah. And Carol, you brought up a really compelling point to me on the, the developer units and the kind of hearing concerns about the seven percent fee and the kind of gives there. I, you know, I've got, yeah, seven percent with three units. That gives me a little bit of pause. And you brought up just a great point about like, there's so many community members in essential jobs. That's the threes that they give. So it certainly.
I don't know. How do we make that decision? Are you still on three, Steve?
I'm still okay with three.
Okay.
I'm waffling. About the school district units.
Yeah.
Right? Like that's a lot of set aside before we've even started the lottery. So. Yeah, I'm waffling.
So can people feel okay about two?
I can feel okay about two. Yeah.
Five percent and three or?
Yeah, or seven percent and two.
I'm zero right now.
Okay. Does that give you enough?
Want to keep the same votes, but with two or?
Good question.
I guess.
Yeah. So what do we have? Three? Jay, are you okay with two?
I, I would, I think the developer fee and the number of units go hand in hand. They're tied. If, if we're able to re, you know, not spend 10.4 million dollars on just a developer fee, then I'm willing to move a little bit on the developer units. If we're spending 10.4 million or thereabouts, uh, which is 20% of our subsidy, then I, I, then I'm not supportive of the developer units.
Okay. I think that's, I think we can.
Show us what you can do with that.
Yep. Got it.
And I think it will help inform your thinking once Suzanne has a chance to send you what's included in the developer fee. Cause that may, it may change your thinking a little bit.
And it's a six-year projected runtime. So employees for that amount. Okay. Thank you for walking through that. And for working through what he proposed.
Yeah, sure. That's good. All right. Any final comments? All right. Thank you all for all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you.
Shannon, so we're done with our regular agenda. Should we do a little bit of the, report of the mayor and council before we go into executive session? We will do the report of the mayor and council members and we start with CAST MMC. Oh, I know. One thing that came out of MMC was, uh, the school board, actually they hosted and it was very nice. But they really had a lot to say about, um, teacher spending and things. And so they actually ended up having sort of an optional school day last week on Thursday. But the point of that was that a lot of the teachers went down to, um, request that the, um, state didn't take away any student funding. And the town of Breck really stepped up and was opened, opened the rec center for that day that the schools were sort of open, sort of closed and, um, and were, they were really grateful for all the kiddos that were able to find other spots. So I just wanted to thank the rec crew for, um, figuring that out with almost no notice. Cause I think it was like two days that we gave them and, um, parents were happy and kids were safe and happy as well. So that was great. Scott, was there anything else that came, I mean, Julie Suter was there and definitely gave lots of updates about just high level of uncertainty nationally right now. And we had the, um, town hall with Nagus where he kind of reiterated that. We did give an update about the energy, um, our.
Do you see intervening?
Thank you. Yes. Our intervention and, um, we're intervening with Excel to ask, um, for some options for decarbonization. Besides just building a bigger gas, natural gas line. The town of Breck brought it up at mayors and managers, I don't know, several months ago. And countywide, everyone was very happy to move forward with us on that. So that's really great. We did give an update on that. And people seemed happy. I think that's all that really happened. And we didn't have CAST. Scott, anything to add? Okay. All right. Um, open space.
We had a meeting and the minutes are in your packet. Uh, just throwing a little bit of color onto some of that, um, we talked about the cucumber gulch preserve and the wetlands monitoring. There is a, um, a concern over reed canary grass and, um, showing up in the upper gulch. And so there is, um, there's, there'd just be a sample size of that, that is going to be tested to kind of like feed it until it dies. Like overfeed this reed, reed canary grass. Am I doing this right?
You're doing great.
Okay. And so. And so, um, long story short is that this reed canary grass is seen as overtaking the willows. The willows is what the beavers use to create dams and to feed and everything like that. And so there is concern that this reed canary grass is going to overtake the gulch. And so there is some experimental, um, process being used to see if they work. The, the desire is not to use pesticides, um, and then impact the, the, the water that's flowing down there. So other steps are being taken and tested. And so we're excited to see what the, what the, um, results are. And it's called NutraFix. It's overloading the nutrients. So that's the term. Am I right? Yeah. Okay. Um, the other thing that, um, we will see in four weeks, I guess, um, is a safe passages, uh, presentation or a summary by, uh, two. Oh, great. Even better. Um, I thought we were having a spring break coming up.
Hmm, you wish.
Yeah, I know. Um, so, and I think that I, you know, the, if you get a chance to, to really dive into it, it's, it's going to be a, a, a great conversation on, uh, where Breck Ridge stands as supporting that safe crossings. You know, uh, west of Copper, east of Vail Pass, that area. And so, uh, definitely spend some time on that. And that was pretty much the conversation. And, oh, and we had some really, and it's in the, it's in the minutes, but we talked a lot about, um, some of the new trail initiatives for this summer season. And, uh, Duke and Tony and, uh, Joel have their work cut out for them. They have a very ambitious list. So we're really excited. And one of them includes Copper Canyon. So great job, Todd. Yes.
It's exciting.
Thank you. All right. Um, uh, we don't have history.
Yeah, a quick little update for you. Um, Susan and a couple of the part-time tour guides were down at Dillon Valley Elementary, um, covering while a bunch of the school district staff were down in Denver. Uh, they gave programming to over a hundred kids that day. So really nice of Breck history to step in and help out and share a little bit about the work they're doing up here. Um, so that's great work. And then Dennis Kuhn has been recruited to the board. Uh, he'll be a great addition. He was the council rep, so obviously knows what they're doing, uh, has a construction background, knows the open space land. So I think he'll be really valuable to, to the group. And then, um, Larry and Peter have been working on an alternative plan for Mini Mine. The general first kind of chunk of that would be organizing and inventorying the historic fabrics. So we kind of have a, an understanding of what we've got to work with up there. One of the things that was, I think, brought up last time was kind of this concern about impacts to the existing trail. There's a, a machine called a spider that they use like to put in lifts up in the tundra. So they can get a spider up there and it rolls on a, it's a wheeled tracked device that, um, should basically allow them to get up there and kind of maneuver around and look at some of that stuff. But, um, that would all come back through OSAC and BOSAC and then again to the council and, uh, BSCC. So expect to see something there. And if you have, you know, a particular interest in Mini Mine, certainly get ahold of me or Larissa and, and let's get any questions we've got answered.
Perfect. It's awesome that they're still looking or that they're modifying.
Yeah, trying to come up with like an alternative solution that maybe hits everybody's goals and still protects the, uh, the asset that's remaining.
They're great partners. All right. Brett Creed of Earths.
Shannon and I had a meeting this morning with Tamara and Martin Carter, who's the new president of the board. hashing out the terms of the new contract that the town will have with BCA. Of great note and where things are going, both internally and as part of this agreement, is a greater recognition of the resident programs like, uh, the Eclipse Theater and Backstage Theater. And getting them a seat at the table with BCA. So that's in progress. There is a board meeting tomorrow, uh, late afternoon where they'll review the contract and talk some more about getting, uh, this standalone committee. The chair of which will have a seat at the table of BCA. So there will be a greater voice, uh, of the sort of powerful organizations who I think are feeling a little left out at this point in time. Good progress, I thought.
I agree. Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, one more thing. Everybody's invited on Friday, April 4th, to the opening of a combined program with the school district, Upper Blue, all the way through the high school for student and faculty exhibits. And, uh, it, it's supposed to be pretty good. They've done some good work.
Cool. That's awesome. CML Advisory?
We did have a meeting last Friday, um, just a handful of pieces of legislation were discussed. I don't think anything incredibly notable, but there's maybe a month and a half left in the session. So we'll see how things continue to unfold.
And then social equity?
Yes, we had a meeting last Wednesday. We welcomed our two new members, Michelle Mahoney and Abigail Martinez. Thrilled to have them as part of the commission. Otherwise, as Jeffrey would say, it was a very housekeeping meeting. We just refreshed the roles and responsibilities of each committee member, um, reassigned, um, subcommittee groups. So just relayed the foundation. So just relayed the foundation for this new BCA.
Terrific. Arts and Cultural Master Plan?
Meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Shannon, Report of the Town Manager and Staff?
I don't have anything for you this time.
Any other matters?
Sort of. I, we, we were at the, uh, Kelly was up on stage for, uh, Jordan Nagus's, um, public meeting, uh, on Saturday morning. And, uh, it, it was really great. It was, he is an incredible representative of our, our county and multiple others. And I thought he just did a masterful job, uh, explaining himself, explaining the position that they're in and what he's working on and how not just to be reactive, but proactive things that they're putting forth. And so I just thought that was incredible. I felt honored to have it at the Riverwalk. I guess he's done others at the Riverwalk, but I'd, I've never been to one and it was, uh, it was a great experience. And Kelly was amazing.
I was not, but Speaker McCloskey and Senator Roberts were also on stage and they are just the best. And if you're feeling like you want to get involved and don't know how, um, Nagus has a, I guess, something on his webpage that has some ideas for what you can do. Um, and lots of, he had a bunch of great ideas. So I would suggest checking it out.
And, uh, just a thank you too, to Peyton who did like a lot of legwork on that and
Very last minute.
At the very last minute. And to the, um, BCA staff who made it all work.
Yep, it was very smooth. Yeah. And Commissioner Mamula. Some of you may remember him. Any other other matters? I say it because it's not like as happy as we. Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, I think I would just like to caution us, I know, um, like the I don't know the word for them, the cone aftermarket fixtures that people can put on their lights to shine down. I think sometimes we, um, kind of offhandedly refer to them as an inexpensive fix. And I would just caution us to maybe refer to them as a less expensive fix. Obviously it's less expensive than redoing your electrical, but it still can add up quickly for people who weren't expecting that cost. Good advice. Other matters over here? Okay. Anything else? All right. Uh, we need to go into executive session.
We have two items to discuss. Um, can I get a motion under twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four? B and E to receive a litigation update and receive legal advice from your attorney on a federal lawsuit that's been filed in federal court? And to also discuss, um, and receive legal advice and discuss negotiations regarding, um, some CDBG funding.
So moved.
Can you just do all in favor?
Favor?
All right.
Both?
Both.
Okay. Have, um, a decision, but it's unclear. It'll be based on, be based on the outcome. So if we do have a, a decision, then we'll come out of executive session and make that decision. Otherwise, we will see everybody.
At seven o'clock. Okay, we are now back in open session. Um, the staff gave us information on paying back a CBDG grant and we will vote on whether to do that in accordance with the conversation we just had in executive session. Anyone want to make that motion?
That in the best interest of the community, we repay the C, D.
BDG.
CBDG.
Grant this town received, uh, for housing construction.
Second.
All right. Yes, please.
Um, Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton is absent.
Hi.
All right, passes. Anything else?
No, I do have an update, um, but I'll do it tonight. So it's
So people are here.
More public.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the work session is closed. Adjourned. All the words.
Councilmember Owens.
Really? Can we all go? All right, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for March twenty-fifth to order. Roll call, please, Helen.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton. Absent. Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Approval of the minutes, town council minutes, March eleventh. Everyone okay with the way they sound? Stand, approval of the agenda.
We will not have the BTO update tonight. Instead Lucy will be here on the eighth.
Sounds great. Thank you. All right. Um, it's time for communications to council, public comment. This is non-agenda items only. Three-minute time limit, please. If you'd like to speak, you can come on down to the lectern. Introduce yourself. Tell us your name for the record, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Tom Owens.
No relation.
Hi, we're lucky enough to be in the Staples neighborhood. Moved in on October thirty-first.
Welcome.
Um, thank you. Um, we are very frustrated with the whole solar panel kind of thing. We're expecting no bills. We've had bills at three to five hundred dollars a month every month since. We never planned for it. No one gave us the answers. No one can, uh, respond to us. My wife has sent thirty emails to Senova and we just don't know what to do. Can you help us?
Um, so all I can do right now is we'll take that comment, but we will definitely ask staff to get with you guys and then also
Just taking too long when we do ask that.
Okay, understood.
And since I'm standing here, can we also get a street sign?
So you could, you can have your three minutes and ask for all the things you want and then we will see what we can do about it.
I have a street sign sometime soon. I've asked three times.
Okay. Thank you.
Evening, council. Uh, my name is Paul Camillo and I'm representing the Summit County Builders Association. And I'm also representing Careers in Construction, which some of you know all about it. I have some handouts here, if it'd be possible to give leave for the council. Talk to a few minutes. I'm here tonight, uh, to personally thank you all for your support for the Careers in Construction Program at the Summit County High School. Uh, you guys have supported it for the last three years and we're deeply grateful for it. Couple of things to explain where the money might be going and how the program's doing. Currently, there are eighty-two schools in the Careers in Construction Program in the state of Colorado. When we came in, there was forty-two. So the program is growing. It's very popular in the state and having a good success with the program. Summit County High School currently, as you'll see from the handouts I passed out, has the most volunteer hours of any school in the state. Which means we have great support from the community, the subcontractors, trades, they come out and work with the students on a, twice a week. And we do hands-on training with them as we build a tiny home. We're on our second tiny home right now, which we will complete in March. And hopefully, uh, it'll sell like the first one. The first one sold and went to a trailer park, uh, excuse me, a tiny home park down in Durango, Colorado. So there's some success in the program, but more important, it's for the students. It's not for us. And, uh, we, I'm just here tonight to thank you. We're fortunate to have one of the best teachers in the state. Oakley Van Os is by far, um, has won more awards, uh, locally, statewide and nationally than any other teacher in this program. So it, it makes it kind of easy to, to soar with eagles when you're not flying with turkeys. So from that standpoint, we're very grateful and fortunate. The Tiny Home won the best in the Frisco Parade here this past summer. It was a good time. Kids enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun. We also were featured in the Breckenridge Magazine, which I believe you guys, uh, were responsible for that. And, uh, I hope that this is a very nice write-up. Uh, it's, the program's very well-known in the county and we have over sixty volunteers uh, that work with this program from donating material to donating their time. What most people don't realize is ninety-nine percent of the people that work in this program are small business owners. Where can you go and volunteer your time in the middle of the day if you're working for an individual unless that individual allows you to do it? So these are small business owners and it looks like I'm out of time. So I'll conclude it from that standpoint. Again, I want to thank you all for, for your, uh, support and, uh, from that standpoint, I'll just leave you with one thought, which we try to, which we try to go by. It was done by Ben Franklin. Tell me and I will forget. Teach me and I will remember. Involve me and I will learn. And we're involving the students in this and, and they are learning. So thank you again very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time and we absolutely support that program and are glad to hear about the community support. That's really amazing. All right, any more public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Onto continued business, second reading of council bill, series twenty-twenty-five, council bill number four, an ordinance approving a lease of the Little Daisy Load to Justin Thede and Kate Kearns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you, you have the second reading of an ordinance to renew and extend the residential lease of the Little Daisy Load to a five-year term. We know if you have any questions.
Thanks, Duke. Any questions? All right. Any comments from the public on Council Bill number four, series twenty-twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number four, series twenty-twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard. Mayor Owens.
All right, moving on to new business, first reading of Council Bill, series twenty-twenty-five, Council Bill number five, a bill for an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twelve, series twenty-twenty-three to reduce single-use plastics. And in connection therewith, therewith establishing fines and penalties. Keely.
Um, council, we discussed this earlier in work session. Um, this is, these are really housekeeping edits. And reorganization of that section to make it easier to use for staff and the public. Um, and to ensure that the enforcement mechanism is clear, which is title one, chapter four. Any questions?
Any questions for Keely? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number five, series twenty-twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number five, series twenty-twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, resolutions. Resolution number four, series twenty-twenty-five, a resolution designating representatives authorized to coordinate with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority regarding financial assistance matters. Ames.
Mayor and Town, Town Council. The resolution before you this evening will authorize the Town of Breckenridge Finance Director as a signatory on an existing state of Colorado loan that will be used for a water utility capital project. Um, this was presented at the work session today with no questions, but I'd happy to take any questions from anybody here this evening.
Thanks, James. Any questions for James? No, can I have a motion?
I move that we pass resolution number four, series twenty-twenty-five, the title of which you read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, into planning matters. We have planning matter, or planning commission decisions. Stand and on to, um, driving range netting town project, two hundred clubhouse drive.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Kulik, Assistant Community Development Director, uh, for the record. I'm presenting the driving range netting town project, which is PL twenty-twenty-four, oh, five, oh, five. And it is a proposal to install a thirty-foot tall, um, section of netting approximately four hundred and fifty to six hundred, uh, feet in length along the western side of the golf course, uh, driving range as depicted here on, uh, the screen, along with a twenty-foot tall section at the end of the driving range, uh, in an effort to enhance safety in these areas and prevent, uh, um, damage. Uh, this was noticed, um, as required under the town project ordinance. And, uh, really within the development code, the only two sections of relevance for this project are related to policy twenty R recreation. And since this really doesn't further any recreation opportunities, we're not recommending positive points under that policy. And then also policy forty-seven A, which is fences, gates and gateway entrance monuments, um, which allows for fencing along recreational areas. Previously, we've had similar, uh, safety netting at the, the town rec center um, adjacent to the softball field. So there's precedent for this type of project. This, this project was reviewed by the Planning Commission originally uh, January seventh and then discussed by the town council at the February twenty-fifth uh, meeting as a work session and then was reviewed once again as a town project at the March twenty-eighth, uh, Planning Commission meeting where they unanimously recommended approval to the, uh, town council of this project. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I also have Kevin Zagolski here on behalf of the Recreation Department and Golf Course. If there's any, um, specific questions, I think an important note is that we can, we don't have an exact, um, length. It'll be field fitted upon installation for kind of optimization and also, um, just trying to make, maximize the budget for the project. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Kevin, for coming. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to thank, yeah, the rec department and the, uh, Community Development Department for really taking a hard look at what's going to work best for the neighbors.
at what's going to work best for the neighbors as well as the golf course. So good work.
Great, thanks, Steve. I do have one question. I just wanted to know when we originally, or the couple of times that we've discussed this project, I think most of the comments were on the east length of fence, and then we had pretty limited comments on the west fence, which is replacing existing fence, correct? And very limited on the north. I just wanted to make sure that that's a correct recollection, or if you have anything to add about the comments that.
Yeah, that's accurate from, I guess, my knowledge. Did not have any public comment related to the latest modification. And previously, we did have public comment along the eastern, eastern side, but at the last meeting, both attendees, virtually as well as in person, there were no, no public comments.
Great. Sounds like we got to a good spot with this. Okay.
I cannot confirm, though. I don't believe we had any written comments, but Ellie Muncy's done a lot of work on this, was managing, and I was not able to touch base with her if there's any written public comment.
Sure, that's fine. And we get all those written public comments anyway, so we would be aware of those. Okay, thanks, Chris. Any comments from the public on the driving range netting town project? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass the driving range netting project.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, thank you, Kevin and Chris. Appreciate it. We did, oh, no, we're going to redo. Report of the town manager and staff?
Thing for you. Thankfully, James reminded me. So we, well, I say we, but it's really been Keely and James have been working with Vale Resorts to get the conveyance of the Transit Center property changed over to the town. And it's been a long process. They've worked with the attorney and several other folks with Vale Resorts, but we now have an agreement. And so I thought it was important for you all to know that that's come to fruition and also to understand something that we discovered in this process, which is that there is a covenant on that property. And so that covenant restricts the use of the property to essentially transportation-related uses, unless we have permission from Vale Resorts, then there's some other specificity to that. And also, if we want to do, to make any changes on that property, we need to work with Vale Resorts, and they need to approve those changes. Is there anything else of substance you think we should?
No, I think that's, that's pretty accurate. Thanks, Shannon. I completely forgot about it as well.
We both did. Thankfully, we have James.
The covenant and the, the content of the covenant was really prescribed by the original agreement under which this property is coming to us in the first place. So there wasn't a lot of, you know, wiggle room. We sort of worked on some things and got rid of stuff that was outdated and didn't need to be there, but the original agreement with Vale Resorts, you know, set forth the terms under which this property would be transferred to the town. And so it's just sort of, it was already done in that prior agreement. And so the covenant just reflects that and nothing more. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that, and I think, you know, Vale was a good, has been a good partner in, in working through this with us. And I think, you know, if there are future changes, that it will just have to be done in partnership with them, as was originally contemplated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there were really never any plans. I mean, we're figuring we're going to keep the Transit Center there, hopefully change the configuration. I mean, this doesn't really change anything, I guess, is all I'm asking.
And I think we would have wanted to work with them on anything we did on that property anyway.
Well, that's terrific. Well done. Thank you for working on that. Anything else? We've already been through the report of the mayor and council members, so you can listen to that in the work session if you want to catch back up. Any other matters? I have one. I am interested in writing a comment of support for the red, white, and blue fire district mill increase that is going to be, going to vote in May. It was.
May 6th.
Thank you. May 6th. So it's a special election. They do need voters to turn out to support it in order for it to pass. And I think that in a place with, you know, the fire danger that we have and we have a very judicious crew, I think also the board is, they're very responsible and respectful with their funding. I also think it's very important that they get up to the same amount for a mill levy as Summit Fire District. And right now, we're behind that, so I think raising it to 13 would be good for our fire district to be on equal footing, just for the future of that fire district. Anything I'm missing that we've discussed?
Hasn't it been like five years at least?
Not five years, since 2006, since they've asked for more funding. And this would, you know, this is a similar mill levy as like Fair Play Alma. I mean, this is not an exorbitant levy. And I just think with the amount that they need to do and that they haven't asked for more in a very long time, we need to support that. So what I'm asking, I guess, is if it's okay if we wrote something on behalf of town council, the Breckenridge Town Council.
Support that?
Great. Carol? Great. Thank you. Okay.
One thing, if we're just talking about new business, I have asked Shannon as town manager and James from the Public Works Department to take a hard look at the chemicals that will be used for weed mitigation coming, this coming summer, and to think about a way for the property owners to opt out of having spraying done involuntarily on their property. So a more transparent approach to that. I'm not sure it'll require any council action, but I have answered about that.
Jay has an idea about overfeeding the weeds that he would like to share. That's great.
We'll see how that works.
Thank you for asking that. I think that's terrific to look into. Okay, anything else? Scheduled meetings? Anything else, Shannon?
I guess just on the letter, would you like Helen to ask her staff to draft something?
I think that would be great, if you wouldn't mind. I'm happy to, I mean, we had that handout that they gave that I can get a PDF of.
That'd be great.
Yeah, okay. And then it could be the basis for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Carol, anything else? Okay. All right, meeting adjourned. I guess I probably should have said, oh, no, we do have.